Good evening, everyone. It is October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a meeting of the Sherwin Zoning Board of Appeals. It is seven P M. It looks like we have all of our members present. So. Let's open the meeting. Gene, what is first? On our list. I know we have a backlog of minutes and I promise you I will get to them next time.
The first one on the list is the petition of Andre Barrow.
I just was catching up on that. So, Mr. Bar, do you want to sort of present your request? And then we will open it up for the public comment. You're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that. Um. So what I was hoping to do, the property that I own has a house that was pretty decrepit when I bought it. And a lot that's been used behind it, a piece of the property for equipment and landscape trucks, things of that nature. Since the early nineties, it's been used the same way. When I purchased the property, I I bettered the house. I made some changes to the house and I cleaned up the yard in the back. Chris would tell you, the building inspector, that he saw I bought it and what it looks like now. So there was a permit that was issued, a special permit from ninety-nine to two thousand and three that the town had permitted.
We've put a Could you please mute your line if you're not presenting? Thank you.
That the town had permitted the yard to be used for trucks and some equipment to be stored in the back. And I'm hoping just to have the same type of thing. I'm not trying to store a whole bunch of things back there. But we, I do have some equipment and some, some trucks that stay on behind the house overnight. So I'm basically just trying to use the property as it's been used for the past thirty years.
Thank you. So I guess a couple of questions. I've gotten a bunch of, you know, materials from our building inspector as well as the, sort of the neighbors. I do see, you know, there's seemingly, you know, there was a bit of an improvement. You could see from the aerial photos over time. It looks like there was a lot of sort of derelict vehicles and trash in the past, but I do see sort of bins like like landscaper bins for like bulk materials to be loaded into trucks, like, you know, sort of separate bins on aerials and some of the residents have sort of sent photos of multiple different business, both multiple trucks with multiple different business names on them. So if you could just sort of comment on those, those aspects, that would be helpful.
So, yeah, the bins. I use, we do snow during the winter and I use those blocks for salt bins. So those actually get put offsite. The blocks are just there temporarily. They're put on site for about six months out of the year, different parking lots and things of that nature. I stacked them up here at the yard. But there's nothing in them. If you guys come take a peek at them, the bins are, they're actually empty. The, in terms of different businesses, there's only my business.
Could everyone else on this call please mute their lines?
So in terms of different businesses, I do own a couple of different businesses. I own two different construction companies. But in terms of anything else, there's, there's nothing. We keep, we keep our truck movements from between seven and eight-thirty in the morning. And then there's nothing coming in and out until five or six o'clock when the trucks come home. They drop stuff off and then they, ninety percent of my trucks are located offsite. So the guys come in, they drop stuff off that they need, or they pick some small equipment up and then they, they bring them offsite. If you guys see, I have about fifteen vehicles of all different sizes. And on any given night, if you come to the yard, you'll see maybe two or three of them, maybe four. During the winter, sometimes I'll have five or six that are parked. But that's the most that you're going to see in terms of equipment that stays onsite. It's a little bit in the morning, a little bit in the afternoon. And then that's it. In terms of my neighbors, there's no direct neighbors that are directly around me. I live at the very corner of Perry street where I live like under the power lines and the building next to me is vacant. In front of me is the halfway house. And Casey Snow is my neighbor directly in front of me. I actually bought my house from him. So I'm very wary of the amount of noise that we make and the times that we have things coming in and, and going out. I mean, if there was an issue of noise or us bothering him. If you know Casey at all, he would, he's the first one to, to kind of come up and tell you, hey, you're, it's too much or whatever the case may be. So I try to be conscientious of it. We don't do stuff on Saturdays. We don't do stuff on Sundays. You know, it's during the week, during the business week. So that's basically what it is. I've improved the area a lot. So you were talking about the containers. There used to be old trucks. There used to be issues with oil. Old trucks leaking, stuff like that. We don't do oil changes here. We don't do maintenance on, on the vehicles here. Anything like that. It's simply just storage for the equipment that we're not using. We do, like I said, we do do snow and masonry. So sometimes we'll leave.
One quick question, I think. There is sort of material, is there sort of bulk material storage at all on the site? In terms of like, you know, you're buying in bulk or is it sort of maybe some leftover materials from your job and then you're sort of recycling them? I guess that's, that's another question.
So I don't have any bulk material onsite at all. There's leftover pavers in some stone, some blue stone that comes off of sites. And what I do is every two to three months, I actually go through and I get rid of everything that we're not using. So right now there's probably about thirty pallets of random sizes of pavers that we use. And I do a lot of it. So we're constantly going through it, but it's not something that I, I stock onsite. I don't have any, any material that's stocked whatsoever.
So you're sort of, you're not staging new material. You're just sort of assembling leftovers and then sorting and getting rid of it?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open the board members first. Any comments or questions? And then we'll go to the public for comments or questions.
Looks like Mr. Novak has his hand raised.
I can't see. Indeed, indeed. Sorry, I was using my, my real hand, not my electronic hand. First procedural item, Genie, okay, good. I think the noise was coming on your end, but I now see that your mute is up. It sounds like this is the sort of use, Mr. Chairman, that we could issue a special permit for. Typically, when we've done that, it comes with a site plan, which doesn't have to be super detailed. Doesn't have to be a fancy engineering document that shows what happens where and how it gets handled. If there's stuff like salt where runoff might be an issue or, or where vehicles are parked, where oil runoff might be an issue, I think, I think it's, it's, it's fair to the community to, to know how that's being handled. It may not have to be complicated at all, but I, I think we do need to flesh out detail on this and have some conditions on who's doing what there, when, because under the prior owner, it was clearly it's, it's out of view of the street and I'm going to do whatever the heck I want. And, and that isn't what this guy's proposing. And, and I appreciate and respect and thank him for that. But I think it's good for everybody to have it be clear what's happening out there.
Thanks. Thank you. I agree with that. Todd, Jonathan?
Yeah, I would, I would just add, I'd be I'd be curious or wanting to have it committed to and writing from the applicant that it's to service only his own owned businesses and, and not to store vehicles for other businesses, not to load materials onto trucks of other businesses and conduct other types of commercial activity on that land. If, if that in fact is the case, then I think it needs to be called out.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Well, does the applicant have an answer to that question? Are you doing a commercial operation there with other businesses?
So I own Elite Stoneworks, which is a we do specifically masonry and snow. And then I started a smaller company called Legacy that does all of our smaller projects. The reason that we did it is because of insurances. The higher number of employees, we have to go from one, two million to five, ten, and then ten, twenty. And those insurance rates go through the roof for the number of employees that we have. So that was the reason that I ended up dividing the way that the companies are. But in terms of multiple companies, there's not multiple companies in terms of multiple ownership. It's all mine. In terms of the way that we do things internal, I had it divided up just because we're too small to to be able to afford all, you know, the business costs that come with it, but we're too big to have. We're kind of in a funky little midsection where we don't make enough to be able to afford all the high-end insurances that some of the the sites need. Once you have thirty, forty employees. And that's only in the case during the winter. We have a lot of employees. They never come to the site. But on our books, they show up like that. Because I, when I write everybody checks, that's how it comes out. So if I'm, if the checks come out from two separate companies that I own instead of one, it makes it, it makes it easier on us. That's the only reason that there's multiple here onsite.
So I think, so sort of just for, for good hygiene and documentation, I saw, I did review the petition that you submitted or the documentation right before the meeting. I see that you sort of indicate the masonry business in a singular. If you could list out the names of the entities that you own, that you're seeking the permit for and resubmit that, that would be helpful as well as the site plan. And describe, you know, indicate what the uses would be even if they're seasonal. So it could be one area has more than one use. So indicate, you know, which season it has, which use.
In terms of how you want me to divide it out, we I kind of use the whole space just for temporary and then to turn the trucks around to load equipment trailers, stuff like that, and then they leave again. I don't really have a designated space. I can, I can have you guys come out to take a peek. And then, you know, I, I know that it's also, you guys want to make sure that visually it's, you know, it doesn't look bad from the street. So I will be planting and if you guys want to recommend anything else that you want specifically in terms of plants, shrubs, trees. I'm all for it. I'm not opposed to it, but whatever you guys need, I'll do.
Yeah. So I think we just need to get more information to make a decision. So I think that's, I think that's sort of where we need to start. So I think we just need to resubmit the paperwork with all the entities. Like I said, all the legal entities that you own, you want to operate out of there. Your proposal for the amount of vehicles at any given time. And if you're just using it as a staging area for those vehicles, trailers, et cetera, then just indicate as such. I don't know if there's any other information, Rick, that we normally.
If you, if you guys want, I can have just the elite trucks here. My legacy trucks are generally ninety percent of the time offsite anyways. I can just have them full-time offsite and for them not to come to the, to the yard if it makes it easier for you guys.
I think it's more of a number thing. I don't think the name on the side of the truck makes a difference to the board, to zoning board. But that's, that's my perspective.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think you've got the right idea, which is subject to what the neighbors are sensitive to. I think we just want enough detail, not enough, not so much detail here that he has to spend a lot of money on engineers and running around in circles. But enough detail so that, that if God forbid a successor person doesn't behave very well and puts things all over the place, we'll be able to say, wait a second, these were what the ground rules were and you're outside those ground rules. That's all I'm thinking about.
That's right.
I can do that for you.
Take a few minutes of public comment, I guess, before we sort of move to another topic, if that's the board agrees with that. I see none. So let's, let's go with that. I, I see Marion's hand raised. So Marion, if you want to speak.
Yeah, it's not Marion. It's, it's Matt, but I happen to be on this, on this channel here. Just a question about the snow business. Does snow ever come to the property from other sites?
So we're not going to be using the, the lot at all for a snow dump. The only, the only snow that comes, that gets pushed back there is from the driveway.
Got it.
And just to be able to clear out space, we're not going to be dumping any, any snow from any other sites.
And, and what is the property currently permitted for?
In terms of zoning?
Yeah. Well, in terms of, I mean, you know, the business is running from there now. What is it zoned for now?
Well, there was special permitting that was already issued for this, for this lot in the past from ninety-nine to two thousand and four.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's lapped. I think it, there's, there's a legacy of a special permit to run a business. And I think we, at the current state, we don't have one and that's what he's asking for. So.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to make, clear everything up. So everything is, is nice and, and the way it should be.
Got it.
I think are you all set, Matt?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Phil, Placardo? I see your hand is raised.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here with my wife Suzanne Bonjet.
Hi, good evening. I had a small presentation prepared, but I'll just make it short because it's, I had sense that you want to make this quick.
Take your time.
My name is
You can say that's fine. We do have a lot of other, we do have other.
Yeah, okay. My name is Suzanne Bonjet. I live at ninety-eight Prospect Street and I walk along Prospect, Perry and Hunting every day. And so I'm here to voice some concern. You know, I understand that people want to run a small business out of their home. I have no issue with people, contractors, plumbers, they got one truck, they might have a trailer with a lawnmower on it. I have no issue with that. This business at forty-one Perry is a sizable business. I mean, I'm sure you guys are probably aware of this based on the conversation I've heard before, but you know, massive dump trucks, employees coming in and out, all kinds of equipment. I've even seen eighteen-wheel flatbeds delivering large quantities of stone material. You know, I, I know this isn't Wellesley, but this is also, it's a residential area. And it just doesn't feel like it's appropriate. And, and as far as Elite Stoneworks, when I knew that this meeting was coming up and they were looking for a special permit, I made a point of keeping track of the trucks that were coming in and out in the last few days. In the last few days, I've taken pictures of at least seven different trucks. There was a convoy of three Elite Stoneworks trucks coming down Prospect Street one day. Then I saw Legacy, I saw AC Stoneworks, I saw Ace Stoneworks. They're, they're, these are huge dump trucks and they're up and down our streets all the time. I walked by this, this property twice a day for about a minute and a half. And just in that space of time, I've seen all of these trucks going in and out, in and out. And it's not just the trucks, it's employees in their cars going in and out and in and out. So, you know, I just wonder, I heard his explanation about multiple companies, but it doesn't explain the other two companies that have not been mentioned. Why are they there? Are they renting space? Are they parking their dump trucks there too? And, you know, Matt asked about the snow dump. He doesn't plan to dump snow on this site in the future, but we all know he's dumped it in the past. In fact, was ordered to remove contaminated snow from the site winter twenty-two, twenty-three by the building inspector and Sean Colleen. So it's not like it hasn't happened before. So anyway, my, my point being that this is not just a stonemason with a couple of trucks and a few piles of bricks. My main concern is the traffic impact. Again, I'm a walker. There's a lot of walkers on Prospect and Perry. And I think that's a lot of the people who have come to this meeting. And, you know, we have young families pushing baby strollers on Prospect Street. It's a winding, narrow road, as we all know, with blind curves. And it's very narrow, no sidewalks, very little shoulder. When one of those big dump trucks comes by, God forbid, there's another truck, another car coming in the other direction. And then you got walkers with baby strollers. There's no room. Because those trucks do not belong on this road. So, and, and not to mention all the extra traffic coming from employees of his going up and down the road, going to work, coming home from work. It's a lot of traffic.
So sorry, I just, I just wanted you just one more minute if you don't mind, if you could sort of get to the big points.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm almost done. So, um, what I wanted to mention, you know, being on Prospect Street with our proximity to Framingham, we've already got a number of challenges on this road. We've got tons of cut-through traffic coming from Framingham, got speeding, we've got illegal dumping. Why in the world are we looking to exacerbate this problem? Why are we looking to bring more traffic onto Prospect Street and Perry Street when we already have plenty coming from Framingham? So I feel like I can't control what's coming from Framingham. Obviously, I can't build a wall, but we can control this. This is, this is a residential area and, and they're asking permission to run a business, a large business in a residential area. Why do we have to say yes to that? There's no upside. It's all downside. So.
And I'd like, I just like
I just want to just, one moment, everyone who's sort of posting to the chat, those are not sort of considered part of the meeting officially. So if you have something to say, you know, I just advise you to raise your hand and speak up.
Yeah, could I add something?
Before I interrupted you. So I just want to take a moment.
I'd just like to say, this is a seven-day-a-week business. I took a walk Saturday morning and I saw three trucks pulling out of there around eight A M. on a Saturday. Casey, his neighbor, has told me that he was cutting down trees at six in the morning on a Sunday at his site. So it's just constant, every morning convoys of trucks pulling in and out of there.
Yeah. And that's why we're going to ask for more particulars under the numbers, the numbers and things of that nature. So I think, you know, as you pointed out, I think there's a, there's a number here that is an acceptable number. What that is, I don't know at the moment. But I think, you know, you suggested one's acceptable, maybe five's not, maybe five is. I don't know. We're going to get more information and we can discuss this sort of in more detail. Mr. Butler, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with everything Suzanne and Phil said. You know, I feel like, I guess I'm just puzzled a little bit, you know, I think there's a residential zone. I don't understand how someone can run a business out of it without the permit. I thought the permit had to come first, but I'm not an expert in zoning. So I, I guess I'm just puzzled as what, how the process works, like.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right. You know, generally it does. We could be, you know, we could be draconian and start issuing fines, but he's here trying to get a permit because the property was derelict and used as, as had a, you know, permissive use to run a business, a landscaping business in the past. That's probably why you bought the property because that had been the legacy of that property. So I think, you know, we, you know, as taxpayers, you have the right, really in some ways, you know, the right, but it's, it's usually literally granted to run a business out of your home with, with limitations as our esteemed former chair pointed out. So I think we're going to get more information and we'll, we'll sort of talk about, you know, what those parameters might be.
Well, how does the approval process work? Like, once you do receive that, who actually makes the decision?
The decision about what?
Whether to grant a special permit in
This board.
Okay, without any additional input from the public?
No, you can bring more information. Look, if you want to, if you want to commission a traffic study, that's, that's your prerogative, right? I think that there's, you can bring, you can bring whatever information you want. I think it has to be, you know, opinions are obviously valued. You know, but obviously, you know, people with, you know, credentials have more weight to their opinion, right? As, as with any evidence. So Mr. Novak, I see your hand is raised.
You're on mute, Rick.
Sorry. In, in between the lines, I'm, I'm hearing from Mr. Butler a question about how the board makes, makes the decision. That'll all be in an open process at a public meeting. You can watch every second. There won't be any closed doors, surprise, sort of because we're not allowed to do that and, and wouldn't even if we could.
See, Matt's hand is raised again.
Yeah, so you know, I appreciate the the board's desire to get more data, obviously, because you can make a decision once you have more data. So let's say for the sake of argument that, you know, you get the, the information about the number of trucks and and there's some agreement made about the number of trucks that are acceptable. What is the, what is the mechanism of enforcement for, you know, making sure that 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 is being honored to the letter of the agreement? How does that, what is that? How does that process work?
If, if zoning board of appeals or the building inspector is aware of a violation of that agreement, then it will be investigated, I guess, because normally that would work. So.
Yeah, and I asked, I asked the question not to be, to, you know, using your words draconian, but just to understand sort of the you know, this there's a desire for this to be an above-board permitted site, which is, you know, obviously much appreciated. But then, you know, once, you know, once that, that door is open, you know, as a, as a resident, you know, I would want to make sure that, that those activities were, were honoring the, the agreement, you know, honoring the parameters of the permit. And so, you know, it's easy, it's easy to say, okay, well, yeah, it's enforceable, you know, in air quotes. But just really truly understanding what does enforceable mean and, and what are the parameters or what are the processes for that? Just because it's you know, I've seen it before in town where, you know, businesses, and I'm not suggesting that this is going to happen here, but I've seen in the, in the past that businesses request a permit, they get a permit and then, and then run roughshod over the rules. So just understanding as a, as a neighbor, what the parameters are for enforcement is kind of important because it, it does mean that there are, there's recourse if something is not going the way it should go.
Yeah, no, like, like I said, if the building inspector or the board becomes aware of, of an issue, we will investigate. I see the building inspector's hand is raised. So I want to sort of defer to Chris here.
Hello? Chris Kenny, building inspector. I'll just speak to sort of how the enforcement of these usually goes. And also the way that the board in the past has written these decisions. Generally speaking, these types of special permits are for Generally speaking, these types of special permits are, uh, for a limited time period, okay? And so the board has to reissue the permit typically yearly. Uh, at which point, we have another meeting like this, right? And the, and the neighbors, anybody that's that's, uh, interested can attend. And, um, the board oftentimes will make adjustments to the decision to sort of fine-tune it in a way that hopefully, uh, deals with people's concerns. This has happened. E- even on this property, if you look from the decision from nineteen ninety-nine, uh, yearly up until two thousand and five, many changes were made along the way to sort of fine-tune what was gonna be allowed on the property. Um, and anyway, so that's one mechanism that we, the the town and also the residents have to hopefully make this a a use that is, uh, acceptable within the neighborhood, right? And then beyond that, if if there's a condition of the decision that isn't met, and I, as the zoning enforcement officer, am and called in to to look at it, and yes, we have a violation, um, you know, there's there's certain there's certain ways that we can deal with that. There's monetary fines that can be issued if it's something, uh, that, uh, merits that. There's, um, you know, we can put conditions in the permit that, you know, that it it will become null and void if certain things are are are, um, are not met. I mean, there's, there's a a fair number of options here, but, uh, ti- typically it starts with with me being notified and then having to 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 work out, uh, what the issue is and and and, you know, hopefully get a satisfactory response out of the, um, uh, the applicant, uh, to get him back into compliance with the decision. And if if the if the property can't be brought into compliance with the decision, then we come back to the board and we make, try to make modifications or do other things like that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that very much. Yeah, thank you for reminding me about the term of these, uh, permits, which is a great point. So, uh, with that, I think we're gonna, we're gonna table the rest of the discussion, uh, on this topic until, uh, we get more information from the applicant. Um, and so I don't know where we are timing-wise, Rick. Uh, I see your hand is up.
Well, I was just, uh, I was just gonna make a motion, if you will, Mister Chair, that we continue the hearing on this matter to, uh, to our next hearing. And, uh, and and invite the applicant to meet with his neighbors between now and then and try to come up with an agreed set of ground rules, operating hours, intensity. Um, you know, we should remind the applicant, this is a residential zone. This is pretty much a nearly industrial use, so. Um, having some, having some pretty clear handcuffs on it makes some sense. It's not as of right. We don't have to grant this permit, but obviously, if there's something that everybody can come up with, um, that would be best, and we'd invite them to come back that time. That would be my, uh, narrative and motion.
Yeah, I mean, my inclination would be, I'll just state clearly, my inclination would be to grant the special permit, but the question is, what level of activity can you actually operate those, you know, a- a- out of that location? And so I think that's, that's clearly what's up for discussion. Um, so, um, I think that that's sort of where we are, but, um, just wanna put that out there.
I rephrased my motion to be merely that we continue it until next time.
Yeah.
Second that motion.
Great. Um, all in favor, I think we all were all in agreement. Jonathan? I don't see, I don't hear a day, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna think that was an agreement. So, you know, we'll move to the next time. Um, Mister Vero, I apologize, we couldn't deal with this tonight, but hopefully you can provide, uh, us with more information and talk with your uh, neighbors and we can come up with a solution next time.
So you're continuing it to Oc- October twenty-second?
Uh, yes, if we, what do we have on that meeting? We have a lot, right?
You have, uh, brush hill, you have two findings. So, yeah.
Is there another, we probably have to pick another day for another meeting, so is there a a day in the week after that we could pick for that, and then also just maybe some administrative some minutes to do, deal with some of that? Or maybe a quick meeting?
For the week of the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, is there any day that, uh, is preferable for the board? Not Halloween for me, I have a little one, so.
Yeah. Well, the night before Halloween would be fine, the thirtieth, for me, anyway.
Same.
All right, let's do the thirtieth at seven. Let's sort of tackle this in some minutes.
Todd, that's good.
That works for me.
Okay, great.
So this one's being continued to October thirtieth.
That's right.
Okay.
Great, I think we're gonna deal with, uh, Whitney Farms bond issues that, uh, that, uh, Jean. This predates, uh, all of us. Is there someone here from the applicant, um, to sort of discuss? Not yet, but it's gonna make sure there's someone here.
I don't see anybody. Um, Mister Moore was aware, I sent him the agenda with the, um, Zoom information on there.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna do a really horrible job of summarizing this, and I'm sure Rick will jump in and help me. So, uh, just for everyone on the call, uh, this is about, uh, the Whitney Farms development, uh, on Whitney Street on the way to Ashland. Um, the developer, uh, is part of our, uh, part of the ZBA's original fi- uh, finding, I guess. Um, back in what year, Rick?
It was before me, but I think the original findings were, yeah, twenty-eleven, twenty-fourteen, something like that.
A long time ago, uh, the, uh, part of the conditions were that there would be a bond by the developer. The bond took the form of, uh, a, a letter of credit, which the town could draw on if work was not complete. Um, and so that is sort of, what, it's an issue we have to discuss in open meetings, that's what we're gonna discuss for a few minutes now. Um, Rick, I saw a couple of emails, and so I don't know if you wanna sort of start us off with your last sort of, uh, your, your six o'clock, uh, your five thirty, six o'clock emails and sort of what your, what your perspective is. Um, it looks to me that the work, um, uh, as required, has not been completed despite the applicant's, uh, contention. It seems it's, it's fairly obvious to me uh, that it's not been completed. I think it's in the town's best interest to, um, require the continuation of the bond or to draw on that letter of credit if possible, so, um, to make sure that the work is completed for the benefit of the residents of that development. So, um, Rick, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna say there?
Yeah, I, I mean, the the problem with a letter of credit is it expires unless it's renewed. And, uh, this developer said I want it to expire. And under the terms of the le- letter of credit, which you Zach haven't seen, which I haven't seen, and Jeremy, if you're listening, we need somebody to find it within Town Hall so we can read the actual document, not the letter from Rockland, but the, the letter of credit from Rockland. Um, which will say how and when draws can be made, but I, but I hereby move that this board, uh, uh, request, uh, the town to draw the letter of credit in fall if it is not renewed within the next, um, week. Um, because, uh, letter of credit draws are not immediate, and if we let November fifth come and we have not made a draw, our security is gone.
Yeah. We, the town and the residents, uh, should not be in that position, so.
Correct.
I would say that if the bond, if if the letter of credit is not renewed by the eighteenth, so my, my motion is that the, if the letter is not, uh, renewed by the eighteenth, renewed or a new one in place with an appropriate amount by the
Correct.
That we draw, move to draw upon it.
I, 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 I adopt your amended vote and second it, sir.
Mister Lavi, Mister Fitch?
I agree.
Yes, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Wonderful.
I, I do think we need to get that specific letter of credit, though, uh, post haste, because that process will need to be kicked off.
Yeah, well, we'll start the process probably before the eighteenth, just to make sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row.
And 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 Jeremy, if you're listening to this, if you could call that bank and tell them that's what we're planning to do, um, I bet they will make a phone call to Mister Moore and suddenly the problem will be resolved. There is nothing like getting a call from your bank saying, someone's gonna draw on the letter of credit, I'm gonna have to liquidate your security to focus the mind.
Agreed.
Thank you, will do.
Here he is, Mister Moore.
Sorry to be, uh, I lost track of the day, so my, yeah, my apologies. I could, I could make up another excuse like I had a baby, but it's not true.
All right, uh,
Uh, well, Mister
Did you hear any of them? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mister Moore, we, uh, we actually just voted, um, but I think we will, uh, we just wanted to, uh, require your client to, uh, renew the letter of credit by next Friday, or we're gonna draw upon it, so that's what we just voted.
Could you repeat that again?
Let me finish for a second. I'm not inclined to, uh, revoke that vote at the moment. I, I, my understanding, my, my, with my own two eyes, of the site conditions do not satisfy the conditions in the original, uh, ZBA order, so that, that's where we are. Um, uh, and so I
That's fine. Would, would you tell me what's not satisfied, so I can, sorry, I missed it?
Dead-end sidewalks, uh, not, no top coat, uh, there's not, not accessible entrances, things of that nature, so. I think there's, there's some missing roadwork. It's not completely, even in your own letter, you invented, I think there's what, fifteen hundred feet of curving, which you know, uh, is not inexpensive, and I would not want the residents to have to do the burden of the completion of this work, so.
Oh, I, yeah, I, um, yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think there's fif- there's uh, the only thing that hasn't been, the curving's every, in except on Colonel Isaac Way. Colonel Isaac Way is the last little, it's a hundred and fifty, there's a couple hundred feet up, the last Adams is complete, Millstone's complete, all the, all the curving is in, all the, you know, all the drainage works, but we
I mean, I, I wrote a letter from September suggesting otherwise, so I, I, that this is the Uh, it was, it was in my file, I, it's on the top of my head right now. I don't know if, uh, Jeanie can pull it up, but, uh, I'm pretty sure it said many, many feet of, uh, undone curving, Rick.
So, m- m- Mister Chairman, we, we, we have a detailed report from our zoning inspector with a marked-up plan accompanied by pictures showing all the work that's not done. I don't think we can have a realistic discussion saying it is done because it is not. Um, and I think please, please, please. I think what you need to, I think what you need to do is take a look at that plan as marked up and those photographs, and come back when you say it's done. And until then, renew the letter of credit. This is really simple.
Okay, so, may I ask a question?
So, I'm just gonna say, so the board's voted, we, that this is, this is where we are at, so, uh, you have to renew.
I ask it, I know you voted, I respect that. May I ask a question? Typically, typically, when a large percentage of the work that needs to get done is completed, the bond is reduced. And I, I started this, I started this conversation back in the springtime, saying, would you be willing to reduce the bond? And I sent in a report.
And I never heard back from you. Yeah, and our, so, yeah, so, so the answer is, the answer to your question is theoretically yes. However, I believe that the work that is left exceeds the cost of the bond. So, uh, uh, at this point, that, that's, that's where we are. So, um, thank you very much. If you, you know, object, you can, you know, put it in writing and obviously we'll review it, but that's, that's where we are. And Jean, um, we'll get you out the, we'll get you out the notice as soon as possible.
So, okay, where, where is the, where, if I, I don't believe I've been sent the report and these pictures are referring to. When, when, can you give me, can you shed some light on that for me?
Yes, we will have, Jean, Jean will share that with you with the, uh, with the order.
Is there any reason I just got, it just like turned up tonight, so I couldn't look at it before the meeting?
Uh, I don't know how soon, I don't know how long ago it was sent. Unfortunately, I only prepared, uh, this afternoon for this meeting, but, uh, I'm sure it was sent before, before that, so, uh, we are going to move on to other business. We will share that report with you as well as the finding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think next is, um, we forty-one North Main.
That's it.
Wonderful. So I'd like to reopen the hearing, um, in the forty-one North Main Street Pine Hill Estates, uh, which is a forty B that was remanded, uh, to the zoning board, uh, to review, uh, revised plans. Um, I know the last time we discussed, uh, some additional reviews, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Miss Sweet. I actually know, I think, uh, I'm gonna ask Rick sort of give us some historical context, uh, because he was the chair, uh, and on the board when these decisions were made, um, which I lacked at the last meeting. So, uh, Rick, if you wanna sort of, uh, give us your sort of background, uh, here, that would be helpful.
Thank, tha- tha- thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I apologize to everyone for missing the last meeting. I have watched it on YouTube. Um, the town has been trying to work with this developer on this site for eight years. The history of all the proposals is set, are set forth in our June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one decision on the larger prior forty-B. But you can save yourself a lot of digging. The prior proposal fell apart over the usual kryptonite for large projects in Sherbrooke, water and sewer. And for this site, traffic safety was also an issue just because of its location. The twenty-twenty proposal was a subject of months of hearings, a twenty-eight-page decision, and a hundred exhibits. The biggest issue was that applicant failed to provide any credible evidence of a public water supply, and he steadfastly resisted all attempts to have witness testing. In our decision, we said, because we conclude that the project as designed has fatal design errors with respect to traffic safety and the adequate supply of drinking water, we cannot, under the circumstances, be conditioned with local needs, and we disapproved the project on the merits. Went up to hack. Three years later, and by the way, in none of those three years was there any additional testing that could be we- witnessed or or verified by anybody on the public water supply. It came back from hack. Hack said, the fu- limited to substantial changes in the proposal and aspects affected by, including the following matters as they relate to the foregoing, wastewater treatment, water supply, traffic access and egress, and then finally changes in structures. So when you look at the new, the, the new proposal, it's, it looks pretty good. It's much smaller, about, uses about half as much water, about half as many people, and it has a new intersection with, uh, with new signalized intersection at the state numbered highway. Sounds great. But if you open up the bun and look inside, there is no meat. There is still zero water testing, zero. Zero detail on the intersection permits. I know there was a traffic update, but noth- absolutely nothing on the status of, of getting the permits and paying for the permits for that very difficult intersection work. And, and then now there's also a new septic system right next to the public water supply for a restaurant. So based on the hearing, the, that recording that I saw of the night, the applicant plans provide no information on these topics. Um, that, in my view, defies the express direction of the Housing Appeals Committee and de- de- deprives this board of its right to uh, request reasonable information relevant to our duty. So I, I wanna hear what's said tonight, but I would like to, my fellow board members, to consider the possibility that at the end of the night, we, um, move that the applicant either provide detailed information on all three of those key factors by the next meeting, and if they don't, then we just give them a turn down, send them back to hack. I mean, if hack is going to approve a project with no water, having had four years of chances to put up a test with no evidence that they've even made a phone call to the state to get going on their intersection, and very little i- information on how their septic system is, is going to coexist with a public water supply about fifty feet away, then we'll let hack make that decision. So, having said all that, let, let's let the hearing proceed, but I think that's where we should wind up, is if, if this applicant is gonna give us real information, let's take a look at this project. And if they're not, then let's not deal with them.
Yeah, Rick, I, um, I, I, I have to say, I, I agree with your sentiments there. I, uh, caught up in the last few weeks since the first meeting, I think, uh, which I was not really had not had time to dig into, uh, the past hearings, um, but, uh, I see some fatal flaws, uh, in the density still to this day, and, you know, the water supply and um, so I think to your point, unless they're gonna give us real information on the water supply, which was, you know, the phase-two study that was never completed and, and, uh, you know, I just seems like if we're not gonna get real information, it's a waste of everyone's time and money. That's, that's my perspective, but. With that, um, I guess I'll turn it over to Lynn. I apologize for the negative, uh, intro to the meeting, but, uh, yeah, I think this is, this is sort of, you know, better to be honest upfront, I think. So, uh, with that, Lynn, if you wanna have, uh, have some time.
Hi, Lynn, Lynn Sweetow, consulting group. Um, I just feel the warm welcome here. Thank you so much. Um, I am joined here with our attorney, Paul Haverty, from Blatman, Brabowski, Haverty and Silverstein. We have with us, um, our engineers, uh, Mike Fabiano and Donnell Baptiste from High Point Engineering, just making sure everyone is here. Our client, um, Gary Leibarski is here. Our architect, Erin Fulham, is here. And I, Jeffrey Dirk is supposed to be here, maybe he's on, I'm sorry, he may be on another page. Um, Jeffrey is with Finesse, that he's here as well. Um, so we had all intention of going over the additional documentation that we submitted that was asked for, um, at the last hearing. So just for the record, uh, since the last hearing, we did provide a traffic, um, update letter from, from Jeffrey Dirk at, um, Finesse. Um, we did, uh, provide a, a section plan from our architect that she worked on with our engineer. We did provide a, uh, grading plan from High Point Engineering with some additional detail. Um, we also met, um, with Chief Ward to go over his concerns around fire, um, and we are working on a new plan for him that, um, uh, highlights, uh, moves the, the cisterns at his request, and he had one other request, um, on the turnaround, um, to make that larger, and we're waiting on Chief Ward to give us the new dimensions of one of the other municipality's largest, uh, fire truck. So, um, we thought we were making a lot, you know, a lot of progress here. Um, and I'm certainly happy to have, um, our, our staff available, our team members to answer any more questions about that, but I think I wanna, um, just take a deep breath and see if Paul wants to say anything.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, I mean, I, I do want to disagree with the, the characteri- characterization from, uh, Board Member Novak that we did not provide information regarding the water supply. There was significant amount of information submitted during the original hearing process. It may not have been the level of information that the board wanted, but our position was it was beyond the level of information that the board had the right to request. The modification reduces impacts on water supply. It is a much smaller project, it requires much less water. There's no real impact in terms of the modification, other than to reduce these impacts. Um, so our position is, the, the information that we submitted during the original hearing process was sufficient. That was our position when we went to the HAC. That'll remain our position if we have to go back to the HAC on this. Then we've known all along that it was very unlikely that the board was going to change its original decision, even though we have greatly reduced the project impacts. It's just a fact of life. Um, we're happy to move forward and continue with a hearing at the Housing Appeals Committee, rather than stay in and provide you additional information in this process, if you think that that's a better approach, um, or we're willing to continue to come back here and provide additional information until the time period has ended, and, you know, try to address other concerns that you may have through this process.
Yeah, I just, I, um, I have a couple of points there, Paul, is what I, so one question is, I think in the original process for water, it looked like there was, I saw the peer reviewer had not conducted a phase-two study, uh, on the water supply itself, whether it could produce enough, right? There wasn't enough of a pump test that was evidenced. I think that was a big issue. Um, I will say that, uh, you know, there was a neighbor that, uh, there was a sort of resident on Hunting Lane that tended to let her in, uh, which is interesting because that was virtually my experience of a six-hundred-foot well and fracking and inadequate water supply, and so, you know, it seems to be that, uh, that's a common experience geographically in this area, which is troubling considering how many bedrooms are we talking? Is it sixty-two bedrooms still? That was, that was my.
Lynn, do you have that?
We're at, um, we're at, um, we're at fifty-six bedrooms. Um, there was testing done on the wells, um, I, and they, uh, both of the wells, there are two wells there, by the way. Um, the wells, um, had no, no, no resistance. There was, there was plenty of flow at the, um, existing, um.
But it wasn't observed, right? Or, you, did you, did you read the part of our peer reviewers' report that said that they, they couldn't confirm the flow, and that that was part of the phase-two testing? I mean, we're, I just wanna make sure we're understanding that apples are apples.
Yeah, so kinda, you know, let's, let's go to history. Um, unfortunately, um, the ZBA spent the first part of the hundred and eighty days fighting, fighting uh, many, many different fronts, rather than doing a substantive review. So, um, the, again, the developer provided, um, a lot of, you know, the information that they had on the well testing, we made our consultants available, and for, um, you know, and so information was provided, well testing was done, and unfortunately, the board ran, ran, the board must, may have run out of time to finish their peer reviews.
Okay, so I guess, so I'm gonna retract.
That was after we had extended the hearing date a number of times.
I'm gonna retract what I said the last time, that maybe we only need a desk review here, because I think in order for us to feel comfortable at one point, and this is not the only point, but I think, you know, completing the phase-two review from the original peer reviewer, regardless of what are the activities of the previous board, you know, allowed for that time, or whether you, you know, either party agreed for an extension to deal with that, I don't know. But to me, that seems like a big deal. It's a big gap in, in actual data that needs to be, you know, produced, and it, and again, my.
Are you asking for there to be more testing, or for your peer review?
Yes, a pump test, so it's like.
Information.
The wells for multiple hours and make sure that there's enough.
They were pumped for multiple hours.
But it wasn't observed and verified, and that was in the peer review report, so that's, that's, I'm just, we can argue about this.
I, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that I hear from Gary. Gary, um, we, we do know who did the well testing. There was another engineer on the project at that time. That engineering firm has merged and sort of moved on, so I just want, Gary, because again, I don't have a handle on this fact. I don't wanna argue with something that I'm not a hundred percent sure of. Gary, wa- wa- was that well testing, uh, who, who witnessed the well testing?
Witnessed by licensed engineer. I wasn't there, so, uh, a drilling company employing a, an engineer, a hydrologist engineer who witnessed it. Typically, uh, developments require a four-hour tests to be conducted on the wells. In our case, we did the double of that. We provided eight hours of pumping tests, and all of it was witnessed and documented by a licensed engineer.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to understand if that, if that's the case, then I guess our peer reviewer didn't validate that, or wasn't able to validate that was a valid test, so.
We, we can, would it be helpful for them to connect with the drilling company?
Lynn, Lynn, that's the record that we have before us, so whether, whether the facts belie the record, that's something you're gonna have to deal with. So I wanna move on from this issue, but I just wanna make that point, that that is a gap in our peer review from the last time. It need, it's good, that's gonna have to be addressed. Um, I see Mr. Horstley's hand is raised. Um, I'm gonna go with him, because that's who I see first, so I apologize if I have, uh, calling out people out of order. I don't have the sort of mosaic.
Are, are we going to public comment, or are we gonna finish the presentation?
Uh, we can finish the presentation, but, uh, if it's a particular comment on this point, I would ask that if we brought sort of up in this topic, if it has to do with the water, if it has to do with water supply.
Think, I think that's what Mr. Horstley wants to speak to, but he should speak for himself.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Horstley.
Wonderful.
A couple of water supply, uh.
It is, it is, yes, sir. So my name's Scott Horstley. I'm, uh, been retained by John Garrison and other butters, and I've reviewed the files that are on the town website. And, uh, I think to help the applicant, maybe. I, I, and I think there are a number of missing documents here, that I think, according to what you said, uh, Mr. Chairman, would be very helpful to the town in making an intelligent decision on this project. So I've got like four or five things, and I'll just list them very quickly. First of all, I believe the wetlands delineation was two thousand eighteen. I believe that, according to the state wetlands regs, which are obviously applicable to a forty B, those delineations are expired, no longer valid. There is, I, I believe there is a stream within that wetland that was not identified. Be happy to share more on that later. That should be included in the updated wetland plans. The town requires a hydrogeologic study and an environmental health impact report, both of which are highly important in this project, given all the issues that not only the town's raised, but the HAC concurs with. It's pretty clear that there are, in fact, I think the applicant agrees too. I hope that this is an important water supply wastewater issue. The town requires an analysis of groundwater flow directions. I don't, I have not seen that. It requires, uh, zones of contribution to wells. Somebody mentioned a, an abutting well earlier. We don't know if the wastewater is going to that well or not. The applicant may know, but they need to share that information. Um, and then lastly, I did review the report on the test wells at the wetland. Uh, they did do a pump test, and that clearly does show drawdown in the wetland, which is an impact on the wetland, which, uh, may or may not be allowable. I did see the pump test, but I saw no evaluation of the concurrence of that to state standards. My understanding is a point-one-foot drawdown is the, uh, criteria. The, their pump tests are showing several feet, so I'm skeptical whether or not those pump tests are in compliance with state law. So I do believe there's a number of things missing here, and, again, I, I, I'm gonna give the benefit of the doubt, the applicant, that they do care about water supply and wastewater. There's very little information provided uh, on the sites, so, uh, let's get that in here, and let's start evaluating it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horstley, and Lynn, I just wanna be clear, I, I, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't wanna speak for the previous board, uh, with, with their intent, but my, my intent is to get to the substance if we can. Um, but, you know, if this is a, if this project is fatally flawed, we should also ferret that out now, so we don't, you know, waste your time or others as well, so I think, you know, there's, that's my perspective.
Yeah, so Mr. Witten is correct that the order of conditions has expired.
I am not Mr. Witten, I'm sorry, please get the names right.
Uh, I'm sorry, Scott, I, I, I'm sorry about that.
Apology, apology accepted.
And that, that Mr. Horstley is correct that the order of conditions has expired. Um, we can't do any more well testing until that order of conditions is, is put in place. Um, and at this point in time, the applicant is not willing to do any more well testing.
Okay.
And one thing that I would note is, this is a, a public water supply. It's within the exclusive jurisdiction of the Department of Environmental Protection on the permitting. Yes, it is.
Nope.
The, public water supply is approved by DEP.
Uh, may I speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
I wanna hear Rick's comment, and then I'll ask you to comment on that.
Thank you. I disagree.
Um, the answer, Paul, is plainly not. The stow case is very explicit that any threat to local health, well, you can, you, you, you can go try to flip the appeals court, go ahead.
That's a well, not a public water.
And, and, and I'm sorry, if there, if, if you think you have, you are gonna kill all the neighbors' wells by overdrawing here, um, and we don't have anything to say about it, I think both hack and the appeals court would be glad to straighten you out. The, 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 the pro- saying the project is smaller violates what I call the Billy Preston principle. He was a rock singer in the early seventies, and his song was "Nothing From Nothing, Leaves Nothing." And the fact that your project is half the size, if it didn't even have ten percent of the water it needed, doesn't solve the problem. We want the meat, we want the data.
But, but that'll be something that would be ferreted out through the, the, um, public water supply process.
Well, you can try, you can try. Rick, if you know, and, and then, then my perspective is it's gonna be a denial, so that, that's, I'm just gonna tell you right now, I, I, I can't subject, um, you know, the town to that risk. Um, I, you know, that, that's where I am, and if you think that we're out of bounds from having that perspective, then I guess you're gonna have to appeal it.
You, li- listen, Mr. Chairman, you're within your rights. If you think that you are entitled to this additional information, you can request it. If we believe that you are not entitled to this information, that that is above and beyond what a board can ask for, it's within our rights to deny it. You can then deny our application. We can then go to the Housing Appeals Committee, and we can resolve it all as part of that process.
Great, Mr. Horstley, uh, if you wanna sort of follow up comment, and I wanna, I move on to Marion, I, I see her hand is raised as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are numerous references in state law to the applicability of local regulations. What Mr. Haverty, uh, stated was absolutely incorrect. I can provide numerous references in the regulations. We have to, we have to obey the law, Mr. Haverty. The law says that local regulations apply. State law does not preempt local regulations. That's a legal term, preempt, by the way. They are not preempted. Local regulation is not preempted. There are plenty of references in all of these laws that say including local regulations. Sherbrooke's regulations are very specific because they have a very unique hydrogeology. They have bedrock wells. They don't have any public water supplies for the whole town. This is a very unique situation. There's all kinds of guidance and laws at the state level that do not, and I'll state again, preempt local regulations. In fact, they encourage local regulations, so this is, um, a hundred percent incorrect.
And I, well, well, again, note my disagreement with Mr. Horstley.
The town, the town has a right to this information, Mr. Haverty. The fact that you haven't tried to avoid it.
I'm gonna ask you, I'm just gonna ask you to sort of stop. I, I appreciate your perspective, uh, and I appreciate Mr. Haverty's zealous advocacy, so with that, I'm gonna move on from this neutral. Uh, you're on mute, Marion.
Yeah, the, okay, thanks. Uh, twenty-five Prospect Street, this time it's Marion, not Matt. Um, uh, my comment is, is, is simple. I agree with what Mr. Horstley said, and, uh, the wells were tested, it is right, Lynn, for eight hours, but never tested for recovery time, so we have no idea how well those wells, wells will hold up, but the main point is that all this time, this is now, I, I guess it's only the second meeting, it seems like the tenth, but uh, it's never been mentioned by the applicant that they plan to use the same wells for a development on Hunting Lane. I'm not sure why that hasn't been mentioned, but that's yet another draw on those wells. And whatever testing is done in the interim has to be done, taking into account the draw from both projects.
Thank you, Marion, so, very good point. Um, so I think my water issue, I don't wanna belabor this issue too long. Um, I think I'm gonna go to the, sort of the rest of my board members, Jonathan and Todd, and see if you have any comment here. So, uh, before we sort of move on to the next topic.
Sure. Well, I raised at the last meeting my concern about water, and I was frankly shocked that the applicant stated very clearly that they, that it did not intend to produce any more data on the availability of water to this site, after the the strength of our findings the first time around, and the mere fact that they've reduced the number of, of, uh, bedrooms to me is, it does not address that fundamental problem of water and, and sewer, and and now we're hearing that they don't intend to submit any more information. They don't think they have to, and I don't think we should waste the public's time with more hearings, if that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, I, Jonathan, I, I tend to agree with you. I mean, our peer reviewer came back with their proposal, and they said they wanted to perform the phase-two testing, and we're, we're being told very clearly that the applicant doesn't want to, uh, continue the testing, so I, I think that puts us in a position where we know, at least on this issue, we're not gonna get what we want, um, or what we think we need. Todd, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I don't really have anything to add beyond what's already been shared by yourself and my fellow board members. I, I would just say that, yeah, it goes beyond a want. It's a, it's a need in order for us to make an informed and responsible decision here. Um, and in the absence of that, uh, I think our hands are then tied, uh, in terms of the, the path that we have to go down. So, that's, that's where I stand at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a procedural.
Mr. Sir, no, Matt.
Um, I have a procedural, uh, suggestion as to how we handle this. I think we're, I, I, I appreciate both Mr. Haverty's, um, advocacy and candor. Um, it's much easier when they, we, when, when one is not tap dancing around an issue. Um, so, so, so thank you, Paul, for that, even though we see a lot of this very differently. Um, I, I might suggest that it'd be worth, uh, spending some more time tonight on some discussion, and then I have my suggestion to my fellow board members is that we make the requests, which I have written out here, uh, for the information we want, and that we continue the hearing, and that will give the applicant, if they wish, once the hearing is over, to reconsider their, um, position, the possibility to do so, or we can just cut right to the chase and vote it down tonight, because they've said they're not gonna give us anything on an essential item. I, I guess I'd prefer to give them the chance to change their minds, but.
Yeah, I, I, that's, I, that's what I would prefer to do too. Um, so if, if there's other issues that we need to discuss that's on your list, I think you should bring them up, uh, maybe, you know.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in really quickly, we're going to be coming back in front of you soon with regards to thirty-one Hunting Lane as well, which will raise some of the same issues. with regards to thirty one Hunting Lane as well, which will raise some of the same issues. So it may be one way or the other, we it might be better to resolve them at the same hearing.
Yeah. That makes sense. We could do, yeah, combined hearing for the next next one.
I do, I do want to, I mean, there is a lot of information that we submitted. So I just want to say, you know, for the record, that the stormwater and the traffic were were peer reviewed extensively at the last hearing. With regard to the traffic, we were asked to move the entrance. We did move that entrance. We reduced the number of cars. So there was a reason, I mean, asking the applicant or stating that the applicant should have worked to create an intersection on North Main Street that is clearly in the jurisdiction of the municipality and the state is it it I I just want for the, you know, for the record, you know, at this point, we've we've created three means of access and half the, you know, half the number of cars going through there. So so I just want to put that on the record that we are also taking exception to that accusation that nothing was done. A lot was done. We created another entrance. As far as figuring out how that's done, that's going to need to be a joint venture between the applicant, the state and the municipality, if that's what you want.
And we appreciate that effort. I think, you know, from a you know, just the state of the the law, I would say, Mr. Haverdy, you might agree with me on this one, that well, water and septic are a bigger issue than traffic in terms of our ability, you know, or right to sort of deny. So health and safety, right? I think obviously traffic is health and safety, but water and sewer is paramount. So that's where the focus is is tonight. And I don't want to dismiss the efforts that you have obviously made to, you know, adjust the plans. So with that, I'll sort of maybe two quick questions with hands raised. And if there's more you want to present on traffic, Lynn, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. So, Rick, is there anything you have to say?
Okay. Yeah, Lynn, I appreciate that you have said the record shows you've created this new intersection. All I'm asking is for evidence. Show us the meat. All we've seen is drawings on a plan and nothing from Vanass, which is a very good firm, about how they've interacted with the state, where they are with the state DPW, who's made the plans, how the traffic impacts have been done and 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 could because frankly, I would say you haven't done anything on that traffic intersection other than draw it. So please prove me wrong.
Thank you, Rick. Marion, I see your hand is raised.
That's actually Matt Neuchre, just a yeah, question for Lynn. It seems it seems that the the subject of water and septic are a sensitive subject for you. And so I'm curious as to why you're servoing to traffic and sort of secondary subjects when what's clearly being asked here is about water and sewer and sort of getting hard data so that the board can actually evaluate. So as a member of the public.
It was my understanding that the water discussion was over and that we were moving on to other topics. You know, as far as sewer goes, that's Title V. That's within the municipality's local local jurisdiction that happens after if and when a comprehensive permit is reviewed. So I just want the record, because this is obviously going to 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 be going back to court, I want it to be shown that the applicant hasn't done nothing, that they actually have provided more documentation.
So I think I think it's pretty clear that the documentation that's being requested by the town so that they can make a decision, that a objective decision that it sounds like the data is missing. So it's it's as a member of the public, it's kind of disheartening to hear the approach that that you're you're taking here because it it does not it does not convey a a level of cooperation and neighborliness that we would expect.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, I think for the record, I disagree that we have to, I guess, we we don't have to wait to make a decision. We can make a decision at the applicant's peril for not submitting the sort of well and septic information. They believe that we should make a decision. And the absence of that and defer to state standards and condition the approval, but I don't I I don't feel comfortable with that path, you know, because I think our job is to look at the situation comprehensively. And when you sort of delegate, you know, individual pieces to agencies that don't have the responsibility to look at the whole picture, things can happen that can affect the whole project in a way that, you know, looking at it, a microcosm wouldn't allow you to see. So that is sort of why I I I am taking the position I'm taking. I just want to put that on the record. And I think that the Z B A, you know, as a as an obligation to the town to, you know, gather as much information as possible and make cautious decisions. So.
So if if the town isn't willing to do the peer review on the traffic and the stormwater, then we would ask that our funds be refunded because again, that information has been provided. It seems like the the big hang up here is water and sewer. So and there's not more that we can provide to you at this point on water and sewer. So you know.
I think that's that's your
I don't know where we go from here.
That's your choice. Rick, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I I maybe this is a good time. I'd like to toss out what what will probably turn into a vote to my fellow board members. The greatest peril for the applicant is failure failure to respond to reasonable requests of the board within our jurisdiction because, Paul, you and I both know that's right out of the regs. And therefore, I would like to my suggested motion, which I'm not making now, but just throwing out to the board for discussion is we hereby request that the applicant provide detailed and verifiable confirmation that A, well, testing is complete to provide an adequate public water supply consistent with local needs. B, the septic analysis is complete, consistent with local needs, including the protection of the public water supply for the restaurant next door. And C, the permitting progress and approvals for a new state numbered highway signalized intersection. So that's the ask, that we get detailed and verifiable information on all three of those. For example, on on a new intersection, well, we've gotten it done, doesn't cut it. Vanass reporting, here's all we've done. Here's where we are. Here's where we are in the process. Here's where it's going to come out. And here's our estimate on the timeline and cost to do that. That's verifiable.
We have never offered to do a signalized intersection for you. That's an assumption that you're making.
Fine. Your your last turn down was because you didn't have safe traffic access. And Hack specifically directed that you come back and show you have it. If the if the answer is, we think we might someday get an intersection out on North Main Street, but we haven't lifted a finger to do anything about it. Okay, that's your answer.
Sean, your hand is raised. I want to I want to address you properly, Mr. Clean. I shouldn't call you Sean.
Thank you. Point of clarification that we don't have a state highway. We have two state numbered routes. Right. That flight is on a state numbered route. It's not a state highway. It's a local, a local on road.
Right.
Domain needs a state permit, but it's not a state highway.
Correct. State numbered highway.
Day numbered route.
If if I if I could clarify, Mr. Chairman, just quickly.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Jeffrey Dirk with Vaness and Associates. Mr. Clean is 100% correct in terms of the permitting authority as it relates to adding a fourth leg to that intersection rests solely with the town. And therefore, all permits and approvals that are required to implement the improvements are at the sole discretion of the town. So we we would, to the extent that we were adding or modifying that signal, we would be making application to the town for those permits and therefore, you know, conditions could be placed by the town on implementing improvements subject to receipt of all necessary rights, permits and approvals, which is common common practice.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Sean, you still have something to say?
Yeah, that's not what I said. I I just specifically said it's a state numbered route. I do not believe it rests solely with the town. I I think the state highway engineer, this this Mastod engineers would have to opine on that permit. But it is a state numbered route, not a highway.
Ah, Mr. Novak.
Well, Mr. Dirk has just has just proved has just proved our point for us. If it's a local permit, this board is supposed to issue it.
Yeah, and I would say, Mr. Chairman, just back to Mr. Novak's point of board member Novak's point is we can document document that. I mean, it's it's not difficult to do that just to to provide the information necessary to the board, but it's it is a state that and this is not uncommon. It's a state numbered route, a state highway under local jurisdiction. And it's not uncommon. That's how chapter ninety monies are allocated to the communities. That's the town gets money to maintain those roads through the chapter ninety allocation, and it's not uncommon. But but to remember Novak's point, you know, we can, we can document that. That's not, you know, it it's a point of information for the board and it's easily documented.
Thank you, Jeff. On the traffic or, you know, Mr. Novak, board members, you know, is there, I guess, Jeff, is there a presentation that you had prepared tonight for the traffic adjustments?
Really, nothing beyond what's in the letter at this point, which, you know, whether it's considered substantive or not, we've basically documented probably what is two things. The first is probably what would be obvious to anyone is that the number of units has gone down, therefore, the amount of traffic produced goes down. I don't think that's anything earth shattering in terms of information, although it does show reduced impacts in terms of the amount of traffic. I think probably the most substantive point of the letter we had produced really deals with the access to the property. And I think as member Novak had pointed out, you know, the discussion as it relates to the prior application was really that our primary access or sole access was by way of Powder Mill Lane, which then put the traffic out on twenty seven. And we had a lot of discussion about queuing on twenty seven from the signal at Route sixteen. The new plan obviously directs the access out to the signal providing beneficial access because it's controlled by way of a signalized intersection. But not only for vehicles, you know, part of the discussion as well as the safety of pedestrians walking to the school and bicyclists. Access to the signal allows a controlled crossing for pedestrians at that intersection and then being able to walk to the school. That was all a part, you know, legitimate part of a discussion as it relates to the prior application, which was safety. And so we did document in the letter that the new plan allows for dispersal of trips between three access points. But most importantly, has access to the signal, which was something that was thought of being beneficial from a number of respects.
Yeah, just one one quick question. There's three access points to the proposed project. Is that correct?
Correct. The Powder Mill, yes, Powder Mill, Hunting Lane, and then the access directly to twenty seven by
And they're all bi and they're all bidirectional, correct?
Correct.
So there's no so 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 people have the discretion to use three, but there's no, there's no, there's no control to limit flow. It is if 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 everyone decided to enter and exit through one, that is exactly what could happen. I'm not saying that is what's going to happen, but that is what could happen. That just just so I understand and we're painting the picture for everyone, right?
Correct. Yes, Mr. Chairman, and that and that's a very good question. I think one of the things that we were trying to do is going back to the original application, which we had gated access out to hunting was to allow for dispersal of traffic. And, you know, we had that conversation about the difficulty potentially in getting in from Powder Mill because of the other uses that are along that road and and, you know, whether it got blocked or whatever it happened to be for emergency access. The intent on this plan was to allow for dispersal to take place of that. It would address that concern as it relates to basically better dispersal, but also looking at emergency services is that they would have multiple ways to be able to get into the site.
Yeah.
And I just I just want to add to that question. We've put those three exits and entrances onto the site. But again, it is typically part of a discussion. You know, if the municipality decides it wants to limit Hunting Lane to emergency access only, you know, that's one thing. If if the municipality wants to say, we only want right turn out of Powderhouse Lane, you know, we we put them down there, but that doesn't mean that it's 100% the way that it has to be.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. It's something that can be discussed and conditions can be placed, I think. I just want to sort of get understand, make sure, excuse me, I understand the picture fully and that if this is something that, you know, based on, I would say, the other two more paramount issues we can resolve if we want to spend time on this weekend to talk about how we might want to manage the flow. But I just want to sort of make sure that I understood it clearly. So thank you, Lynn, and thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it. Mr. Novak, you have a a lot of thoughts on this. Is there anything you think we should be touching upon?
No, I I know, Mr. Chairman, I think we've hit the highlights here and and I I I compliment the applicant team for at least being candid with us about what they will and won't do because I think that will save everybody a great deal of time. And and maybe them some money. I I my suggestion to my board members is is that we we put our ask on the table and and continue the hearing and see what they do. And if they get back to us with 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 drop dead, okay.
We can't, we can't comply to your ask without an order of conditions. So it's, you know, we're stuck in a box where it is probably going to be near to impossible to get an order of conditions. So
Well, you could you could make that argument to hack.
No, 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 we're saying we we really, we we can't. Unfortunately, due to the passage of time.
Why would it be impossible to get an order of conditions to pump the well?
Because they're not going to grant it.
But you've got it the first time?
Yes, but that was long before anything was proposed at the site.
Ms. Sweet, if you have a
I would, I'm going to object for the Conservation Commission that they would do something untoward based on the purpose of the project.
We we actually went to the Conservation Commission when we were in discussions, excuse me, let me finish, Rick, before you shake your head. When we were in discussions, Rick, with 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 during the litigation section about potentially doing more well testing, we did go to our wetland scientist. We he did have discussions with the conservation agent. We thought that the permits were still alive. And there was not agreement on that subject. So yes, there has there have been discussions. They haven't been part of the Z B A hearing. But it's it's not, it's not simple. It's it's complicated. And it's not something that can be resolved, I believe, within this short time period. I will certainly talk with my client about it again and talk with our wetlands person to refresh me my memory on what happened with the conservation agent around this discussion and see where it might go. But there there was, there had been a willingness and we hit a roadblock.
Okay, well, I I, you know, I think Mike, one of the co-chairs of the Conservation Commission has his hand raised, so I'm going to ask Michael to speak for just one moment as to whether, you know, sort of what his perspective is on this.
Sure. Michael Lesser, co-chair of the Conservation Commission, fifty four Forest Street. There was at one point, it seemed like there was going to be a permit application made for additional testing and we we would treat it like any other, that there's no problem with making that application. Whether some of the delineation have to be redone or some things are outdated. There's nothing prohibiting upfront or that we would ever give that signal that you couldn't come forth to request a an order of conditions for doing additional testing. That's what was always envisioned in the first phase, that there was one phase of the initial run, and then you'd come back with another notice of intent or application for the next phase. And there was no prejudgment about what's possible or not possible. It's not something we do.
Yeah, I just want to comment in my my experience with conservation, although the regulations are challenging, that are not, you know, they're not unfairly applied necessarily, just right away. So that being said, I would, Mr. Horstley, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief, but it seems to me that there are plenty of things that could be done to address what you, the town, has identified as the paramount issues to yours, your terms have nothing to do with the order of conditions. The town regulations require some very logical things, like which way is the groundwater flowing? Which wells will be impacted by the Which wells will be impacted by the wastewater system? What is the interference of the pumping of the well relative to other wells in the wetland? The pump test, as I said earlier, already shows impacts on the wetland. That's pretty clear, the applicant has already provided that, the wetland will be impacted. And then, and then, finally, as I think Lynn Sweet mentioned earlier, agreed with me, the delineations expired, it's out of date. So there's nothing stopping, and, and there's a stream missing on the wetland's delineation.
I said the permit had expired, not the delineation.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Lynn, I'm sorry that you interrupted me. Just to finish my comment, there's a stream missing on the delineation, they could do that without an order of conditions. And the, the pump test already shows impacts on the wetland.
Can I ask you a quick question, Mr. Horsey, when you say it has, it says show an impact in the wetlands, can you just state that very simply, you know, is it, did it water drop, you know, for standing water, so just very clearly for everyone to understand?
Yes, exactly, so there are, the pump test showed various drawdowns at various pumping rates within the wetland. Those are alterations within the wetland, and as I said.
And how is that measured, generally, how is that measured, some, you know, do you put a stick where the water ends before you start pumping, and then, you know, look where it is at the end, I mean, is it more scientific than that?
No, it's essentially, it's essentially what you said, and my understanding is they did install some shallow wells near the wetland, or in the well, and I'm not sure. And they pumped the, they pumped the well, and they showed drawdown, which shows the level of water level drop within the wetland, which is an alteration.
Thank you, Mr. Novak, I see your hands raised.
Yes, Ms. Sweet. Everybody in this phone call, including you, knows that the only reason pump testing hasn't been done at any time in the last four years is that your client didn't want to do it, and that is okay, that is his right. And trying to blame it on a board by, by slandering them, by claiming that you know they will act improperly, is way off base. Please do not do that. It's up to the chair to decide who gets sanctioned, but please do not do that.
The applicant's hand is raised.
Gary Lubarski, applicant for 41 North Main Street. So when we approached the Conservation Commission earlier this year for additional testing, there was a discretion possible from Conservation Commission to do two different routes. Option number one was a very simple grant of permit just to do additional testing. And the agent indicated that this is a more preferable path for us, and it's going to be easier just to do the testing. And when we finally went in front of Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission said that knows that first option would not be available to us. And that we should proceed with a more standardized application that would involve providing new delineation as a whole process, so we had two options, the Conservation Commission had two options to, to give us, to provide us, they have that discretion. They decided to provide us, to send us to the more complex path, complex route. And that, that's why we made a decision that, look, it's, it's not going to be productive to go to that, so we decided to stop our.
Thank you, Mr. Lubarski, just a quick question, do you have, you have well, you have shallow, you have wells installed? And I see you have like, there's some deep wells, and these have casings, right, these are steel casings that remain in the ground?
Absolutely, yes.
Are there pumps in those wells at this time, or are there no pumps in those wells?
Uh, one well has a pump, the other one does not.
And my understanding of a pump test is you could run wires to the pump, you have to run a generator right next to the pump, and, right? So you, so you basically need to keep the, there's no way to remove the generation of electricity and the outflow of water out of the wetlands, you're, you're sort of stuck if you have to do it right, right then and there, okay?
Yep.
I, I saw Michael's hand was up, I don't know if you can comment.
I just wanted to say that the issue of whether there's two options, that there isn't such a great difference between the two options that you described in terms of complexity or not, so that, that portrayal is not, was not very precise. That in the end, the, either way, we prevent, you'd have to go through a significant amendment and a change in order of, of order of conditions, whether you're amending an order of conditions or getting a new one, but still require a lot of the same work. So, I don't, I don't know what specific conversation you might have had with the agent, but in terms of how this would work out, plan, work out, that there isn't such a difference there, and because this is a significant change, and plus, it's, the old one has expired. So, you'd have to just go through the procedure again.
Thank you, Michael. So, just, just so I'm clear, Michael, and you can correct me just for everyone's awareness, I'm going to try to recall my own experience in my recollection, but basically, they would need to redel, redelineate the wetlands from a wetlands engineer, correct, and then submit a sort of, is a is it a, there's a short, there's a short notice of intent, right, is that, I want to speak to that one, but there's like this sort of there's a wetlands delineation, and then there's a notice of intent for an order of conditions, is that correct?
Yes, they would have to do a notice of intent, so this, that was what was discussed in the last when we gave them a permit for the first pump testing.
In the scope of the original one was to install wells and test them, and was that the extent?
Do a limited test up to eight hours, and that it was clear at that time that if they were going to do another additional testing, they'd have to come back to us of any. Right, and so.
Thank you. Lynn, is there anything else you want to add this evening or present in terms of new information that you would like us to consider?
No, again, we submitted quite a bit of documentation, I, I don't, it sounds like you don't want to look at the sections, it sounds like you don't want to look at the grading, we've, you know, we've covered traffic.
I'm happy to look at it, if we, you know, I, I'm happy to look at it if you think that, you know, we're going to start with, if we're going to, you know, overcome some of the other, you know, water supply and septic concerns through this hearing process, otherwise, I think I'd like to give folks a few minutes of their time back, and I'll, I'll review them, obviously, but that's sort of my perspective here.
I understand your perspective, and we don't want to take advantage of the board's time at this point, I don't know if Paul has anything else he wants to add.
I mean, I think at this point, we should just continue this, we'll take a look at what the request is in terms of additional information, and we'll make a determination.
While we're all here, should we set a hearing date for 31 Hunting as well as a continuation of this hearing? Do we want to try and do that on the night that we already picked for the other hearing, we want to push that out another week? Board members? 30th or sometime in early November?
Genie, and, and, Genie, and through the chair, Paul, what's our deadline for starting 31 Hunting? I don't have everything down.
I, I'd have to go and take a look at the, the HAC order, it was 30 days from whenever they issued it, which was about a week ago, I think.
Was it September or October date, Paul, do you know?
On, on the order, let, you know what, let me just look it up. It shouldn't take.
Please, if you would, thank you, sir.
It was actually just this past Friday, it was October 4th. So it's 30 days from then.
So, it looks like we probably should do this on the 30th with the other meetings, if that's workable for folks.
Yeah.
I hear a yes from Jonathan, Rick, 34 for you to continue this, 41 and open 31.
Yes.
Great. So I move to continue the hearing for 41 North Main Pine Residences until October 30th, 7:00 PM, and then I think, Genie, you'll send out a notice.
Mr. Chair, should we entertain the motion first for the formal request?
Uh, yes, sorry, I thought we were, that's the procedure to get that on the record, yes, we should do that.
All right. I move that we request that the applicant provide detailed and verifiable confirmation of the following three items. A, that well testing is complete to provide an adequate public water supply consistent with local needs. B, that the septic analysis is complete, consistent with local needs, including protection of the public water supply for the restaurant next door. And C, that the permitting progress, as to the permitting progress and approvals for the new state numbered route, signalized intersection.
Seconded. Any objections? From the board? Great, it's approved unanimously. So, thank you very much, Rick, for your thoughts this evening, and Lynn and Paul, you know, and Mr. Lubarski, we do appreciate the efforts you've made, I think, you know, just please try to understand the position we're in as well, and what we have to what we're trying to achieve, and and, I just want to say, you know, we don't want to, I, I don't think you would want to be in the position of us making a decision that has a lasting impact on groundwater, so with that, I will make my motion again to close the hearing, but I see Michael's hand is up, so I'll give it one, one moment.
This is Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. I guess whether in your emotion about the water issues and that you deal with the joint project issue, whether you need to note that.
We will, we will do that when we can actually, actually have opened the other hearing, and it becomes a live issue, so.
And also, I can tell whether there's really more specifics on this new septic system that might be needed in terms of mounting, I couldn't remember if that was included in this kind of request, but whether there are more septic, specific information that analyses that are needed. But I'll leave you guys to wrestle with that.
Thank you, Michael, yeah, we will.
Zach, was your motion to continue?
My motion to continue this hearing for 41 North Main Pine Residences until the 30th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wonderful, any opposition? No opposition heard, so it passes unanimously, this meeting of.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm not sure, and Mr. Harvard will know this better than I do, but I think we have to do these motions, these votes by roll call to be technically proper.
My informality, so I will do it by roll, so, Mr. Fitch, this is the motion to continue this hearing until the 30th.
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
I as well for myself, so we will continue this until the 30th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The meeting is closed for the evening, thank you very much, everyone, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.